We, Corey?
We are.
Good morning. First, I'd like to say we're holding this meeting at eight thirty in the morning. Due to an excess of caution, there was some division within the Freedom of Information Act Commission on whether last meetings Monday night was properly warned or not. So within an excess of caution, we've refiled the agenda as a special meeting. We are holding it at eight thirty in the morning primarily because that's when the selectmen can attend and we can have a full board. And we also, I think we also have items that we need moved on as quickly as possible. Fortunately, we had to, you know, cancel the last meeting and hold this one early in the morning. But we do need to get this work done. It's an unfortunate situation. There's a clarifier error made and we apologize for the confusion. And thank you to everyone for your understanding. With that, I call to order special meeting, Willington Board of Selectmen for September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, eight thirty AM. First item is approval of minutes. We had a special meeting, the call to order, a call for a town meeting regarding the pickleball courts. Those minutes are right here. You read them?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
A second, sir. Any discussion on them?
No discussion.
They're as revised from the original ones. Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Next, we move on to correspondence. There's been some correspondence via email. I forward those emails to you.
Yep.
You guys took president off, the president to speak off?
I'm sorry, there's no president to speak. This is a special meeting.
Yeah, I understand you can still have a president to speak, but you guys are acting in a coward way, but whatever. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty cowardly what you guys have done, so.
And you, you, thank you.
Well, I mean, you should, you could add, you could have added. I don't know why you guys are acting in this behavior. It's absolutely embarrassing for you two. You guys are folded to the Democrats and acting in a political manner. Absolutely embarrassing. You guys should be ashamed.
Are you done?
I have refunds.
No, I have, I have more to say, but they're, they're cowards and don't want the people to say it to their face.
Drop water.
This meeting is not about that. Thank you very much.
Oh, no, it is. Trust me, it is. It's very political. They're cowards. They took, I mean, if you guys aren't gonna continue, I guess I'll speak.
Twelve, at one twenty-nine, refund of excessive payments. I'll make a motion to accept.
They took, they took me off the CIP because.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Democrats came into the office and Peter folded.
I.
He folded.
Can we mute?
I am. He's unmuting it.
I don't understand why you folded.
I was thinking it's up for you to review.
So they said that they, they were gonna. They said they were gonna bring dirt against the Republicans and he folded. There's people on the CIP that owe taxes. But yet, they, they had no problem with that.
This agenda.
Floyd Department said that the last meeting was gonna be done improperly.
Someone of us needs to make that motion, I believe. Do I hear a motion to remove the disruptive force? I'll make the motion to remove next. In the meeting. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
I'll come to the next meeting and let you guys know. Absolute cowards, cowards. That's embarrassing.
Okay, he's done.
That we refund property taxes in the amount twenty-three dollars and fifty-four cents be made to Stephen. I, I, whoa, Tanya? And Denise, whoa, Tanya, Lindsey Lane, excuse me, Lindsey Lane?
I'll make a motion to accept. I second that.
All in favor? Oh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we recommend that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents be made to the, made to Ewan Cameron of Ruby Road in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, motion to.
Oh, no, I need a second.
I second, I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine cents be made to Harold and Kathleen Ostis of Hallville Road in the, in accordance with the provision of twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I second that.
All, a discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we refund, refund property taxes in the amount of forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents to Robert and Jennifer Sutton in accordance with the provisions of twelve dash one twenty-eight refund of taxes, taxes erroneously collected from veterans and relatives.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund taxes in the amount of forty-six dollars and ninety cents be made to Robert and Jennifer Sutton in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-eight refund of taxes erroneously collected from veterans and relatives.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents be made to the above-named taxpayer of Robert and Jennifer Sutton in accordance with the provision of section one twenty-eight refund of taxes erroneously collected from veterans and relatives.
I second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of fifteen dollars and eight cents be made to Christopher and Diane Walter in accordance with provisions of section one, twelve, one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of fourteen dollars and sixty-six. Start again, fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents to the above-named taxpayer Christopher and Diane Walter in the amount of, oh, in, in accordance with the provision of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I, I second that motion.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let me take a half a breath here for a second because I'm starting to.
You want me to refund?
Let me keep going and then we'll figure this out.
Yeah, sure.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents be made to the above-named taxpayer David L. Wilson of Mason Road in accordance with provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents be made to the above-named taxpayer JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A. in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents be made to the above-named taxpayer A-Car Leasing Limited in accordance with the provisions of section twelve, one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments. Second? Anybody second?
I second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of forty-five dollars and thirteen cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Alyssa M. Kelleher in accordance with the provision of section twelve dash one twenty-eight refund of taxes erroneously collected from veterans and relatives.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes and, property taxes in the amount of forty-five dollars and thirteen cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Alyssa Kelleher in accordance with the provision of section, oh. The section isn't in here. So. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Peter, I think she has a couple in there. I think it's veterans.
They're all veterans. Yes, I believe that's. So it's the same, same statute as Ryer. Yes, we voted on this one. We're still looking at this one. I was just looking at the statute. No. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents be made to the above taxpayer Alyssa Kelleher in accordance with the provisions of section one twenty-eight taxes to veterans.
I'll second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Three more to go.
Three more?
Oh, no, we got a bunch. Yeah, you got, you got some.
All right, let's get going. All right, sorry.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Alyssa Keller in accordance with the provision of section one twenty-eight veterans.
I'll second that motion.
All, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we recommend refund of property taxes in the amount of forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Alyssa Kelleher in accordance with the provisions of sections, what was that, twenty-eight? One, twelve dash one twenty-eight. Veterans. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we, that we refund the property taxes in the amount of forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Alyssa Kelleher in accordance with the provision of section twelve dash one twenty-eight.
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Mary Udall in accordance with the provisions of sections twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund the property taxes in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents be made to the above-named taxpayer PNC Equipment Finance LLC in accordance with the provision of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments.
I think that's.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents be made to the above-named taxpayer Wilbur E. Gangaway in accordance with the provision of section twelve dash one twenty-nine refund of excessive payments. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Please note that all the tax refunds passed unanimously. Oh, I gotta hang on to it. I gotta sign them all still. Public Works report. Public Works has been pretty busy lately. They've been doing roadside mowing. They installed a new drainage pipe under the unapproved section of Daleville Road that is a very steep section of gravel road that washes out every year. And they finally got an underground drainage pipe in there. Probably needed it for a couple of years. They've also fixed the water runoff. They fixed the wash, washout on Cravannick Road. They spread woodchips at both school playgrounds. They fixed washouts along the roadside edges. They washed their trucks and made, did maintenance and repairs. Down at Polster Road, we've been having some fairly serious problems down there. There was a section of guardrail that no longer meets standards and we've been repairing it. But we've repaired it seven times in the last six months because the tractor trailers, who are not allowed on that road by state law, are on that road regardless and they can't make the turn. So they get the guardrail. The guardrail's been replaced with Jersey barriers. And they've dug out all the old, unapproved guardrail. They dug out a swell in that part of Village Hill Road near Farmer's Field. They're removing old wooden guideposts at various spots in town to approve roadside mowing. And they're rotten and can't be replaced with similar. And the new metal guardrail is out of this town's budget. I mean, it's, it's expensive. And they've been doing some roadside tree.
If that poses any kind of safety thing, we'll hear about it, right?
Correct.
We don't replace them and they're there now. Don't want anything.
Right. The, the guardrails that were there that they're not, they're taking out weren't doing anything anyways because they're so rotten, so. And, and all the steel cables missing anyways. That completes the Public Works report, State Police report. They're reporting nine accidents, nine criminal investigations, zero burglaries, one marxeny, and a hundred and sixty-three matters to which they responded but did not write a report. Those are usually very minor incidents. They've done a hundred and eleven traffic stops, three onsite DUIs, five arrests, two misdemeanor summonses, fifty-six infractions, eighteen written warnings, and thirty-three verbal warnings for motor vehicle activity. We're still working on, working with Troop C to see if we can get two sets of numbers, those on the surface streets and those on, on the interstate. So far, they've been non-responsive. Mid-Near Rock, which is our hazardous waste facility, submitted a report to us which I don't currently have with me. The upshot was that many of the surrounding towns, the Mid-Near Rock towns, have their hazardous waste facility here in Willington. We host it, for hosting it, we get a, a major break in, in the, in the cost of running it. And the, it was inspected and found in excellent shape with no reported runoff. Call for town meeting. This is part of the reason we're holding this meeting at eight thirty in the morning. The Town of Willington has had a member of its Region Nineteen Board of Education resign. We have to fill that position within thirty days of the signed letter being received by the town clerk. It was received, I believe, on the third of this month. So we have to have a meeting before the third of next month. And we needed time to make sure that we properly warned the town meeting. So here we sit at eight thirty in the morning, saying that. I move that the Town of Willington, notice and warning, special town meeting. The electors of the Town of Willington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting at the Old Town Hall, eleven Common Road, Willington at seven PM on Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty-four, for the following purpose. Item one, Willington electors to nominate and vote to fill a vacancy in the Region Nineteen Board of Education. Registered voters attending shall cast a certified paper ballot on the nominated names dated this, at Willington, the sixteenth day of September, twenty twenty-four, the Willington Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous? There we go. That completes that new business. We're now going to discuss the salary positions in the town. Whether we want to or not, there's a mandatory change in, in minimum salaries for the state of Connecticut. So, having looked at it, I've decided to bring in somebody that can explain it better than I can. So Stacy, if you would, share your screen.
Can you do it? It's not allowing me to say it. It's disabled.
Yeah, I think that does it.
Okay. Um, let's see here. Okay.
Wait a minute, it's not sharing.
Well, can you?
I think you have to close it and open it again. You have to hit share?
I did. I made her the host.
There we go. That's the little one that's, there we go.
So, there is a new mandate that will go into place on January first of this year for the first increase. Basically, this increase is for all exempt employees who are making less than a specific minimum salary.
What's the definition of an exempt employee?
An exempt employee, which there are some, some links to where those are clearly defined. But a general definition is a salaried employee who does not get paid for overtime. They get their salary. They're expected to work their schedule. And on occasion, they might earn compensatory time according to our policies. Whereas a non, I'm sorry, a non-exempt employee, I slept really late last night. I'm sorry. Non-exempt employee, their salaries, but they still do a time sheet.
Right.
You know, and, and they're, it's what all of the other hourly positions would be. That's basically what it boils down to. You're hourly or you're salary.
Yes.
And you're paid in that fashion.
That's defined by state statute, right?
Yes, I will, I will point out the website that you can, it's very, it's, yeah, there's special rules and, and tests and, and assessments of their job duties, which allow you to explain them. Yeah. So basically, to comply, we need to either raise the salaries to the minimums that the state is requiring for exempt employees, or we have to transfer, convert those employees to not exempt. All right, so, and, oh, there's my July first. On July first, and every three years thereafter, the rate will increase automatically accordance with a methodology to be used to set the new salary level. Fair warning, we have no idea what this number is going to be. And I did a small amount of research trying to find out where and what that rate or their, their schedule, how they're getting that number is going to be.
The, it's the word methodology. That's, that's the thing you.
Yeah, exactly, to find their method for increasing. So a lot of the numbers on this slide, and it is recapped on each of them, are just a general shot in the dark.
Who did the shot in the dark? Is that us or?
That's the state.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, that is, we're just making a basic assumption that it could go to this percent, it could go to this percent. I've given you some differences and cost comparisons. So, and we will definitely get to that. So currently, the employees that are affected by this are our Parks and Rec director, revenue collector, human services director, and our town clerk.
These are exempt?
Yes.
At this moment, they are exempt employees, yes.
The reasoning behind them being exempt is because throughout the year it is difficult for them to remain within a forty-hour work weekend effectively, do their jobs, I would imagine. I mean, certainly Parks and Rec, I can see the weekend.
Town clerk, you have towns, you have.
Most of these positions.
Yep, and revenue collector would be the same.
Tax season.
Okay, well, next season, she's.
Most of these employees are only scheduled for thirty-five hours per week. All of them are only scheduled for thirty-five hours per week. So that's where this gets a little sticky in the month. So anyways.
But this is based on a forty-hour week, but it doesn't really matter in our, the salary's still.
The salary is still the salary.
The salary, yeah.
Regardless of how many hours that they work, nothing has changed. And I will get to how some projections and how that applies. Um, this is. So, when applying an annual increase per the union contract open, all right, let's say that we decide to convert them and they're going to get the. And they're going to get the annual increase that follows that mimics the union contract increase. This is what you're looking at over a ten year, with a ten year forecast. Don't worry too much about the specific numbers, really, the number that you um are wanting wanting to focus on is the. The two million four hundred eighteen thousand five hundred seventeen and fifty two, that is the salaries.
The salary for four people for ten years.
Correct, with just the general assumption or. General thought of around a two point five percent increase. So these are, the all of these increases are at two point five percent.
That's what we're estimating based on. The no best, the two point five percent is based on past contracts.
Yes.
So if they've been making two point five percent more a year, every year for the last ten years, have you been, we're. We're rejecting.
We're getting there, okay. So the next is um. Again, these are just estimated costs, alright? If we convert them, we will have to pay them for overtime when they work overtime. Now. These numbers are just overtime. An 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 estimation of the overtime cost. Um, and then down here on the right is their annual salaries for those ten years. Their estimated overtime of, to get us an even number, we went with fifty two hours per year. Just that averages out to two hours per pay period of overtime, but it doesn't, we all know it doesn't work that way. There's many pay periods or many times throughout the year where they're working their regular schedule and that's good. And then there's other times where they're here much more than even forty hours, I think. So um. So with that being said, those, all of those increases. Um, and then the other thing to keep in mind is that the items that are here in yellow. Are the transition years that it would be. The third year bump for if you, for the mandated amount if they were not, so just for your reference, that's why I highlighted those columns. Now. This this is the general figure, right? This is, we are just estimating, we have no idea, their initial. Increase was twenty three point three nine percent happened at the beginning of this fiscal year. The second one that's going to take effect on July first, twenty twenty five, this fiscal year. Is a thirty three point sixty five percent increase. Or if if we are to keep them as exempt employees. And then we're with just estimating, the cost that I'm throwing in here is just if they did a five percent increase, if they did a ten percent increase. Over those three years, we don't know, we don't know what their methodology is going to be. So I'm just. Being safe. With these numbers, I think they're a safe amount, so. I know, I'm sorry, guys.
No, 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 I'm I'm looking at some of these numbers that ten percent bump mandated.
Yeah, well, yes.
That, I mean, and that's a guess, thirty three percent is a free, probably a free, twenty three percent, we know, thirty three, we know, right?
Right.
And if if thirty three percent is a known, ten percent is an unknown, is probably a pretty conservative though.
Yeah. Um, I think their initial, their initial um. Thought was to get them up to a salary level that more reflects cost of living right now. And then, but they're trying to do it incrementally, so it's not really killing the employers. Um, that's my thought on that, and then they will, they will do increases, but I don't, I don't suspect it's going to be a. Huge number, but let's hope, you know, but anyway, so.
Well, these guys are hoping.
So this slide is just predicting um. Increases for. If it was the uh the left hand side is if we only increase them. On that third year of bump. Those years in between, they're still making the same salary, there's no increases in between. And then that, the the left side is at five percent. The right side is at ten percent. So, again, guessing, we're guessing. So, that being said. To get into that more, to get into that more specifically, for five percent bump, these are your numbers through each year. And then your total cost. If it was a five percent increase, is going to be. Fifty two, two million, six ninety seven. Ten percent. Is a little bit there, a little bit more.
Sorry, we listeners, who's going to know what we're talking about, I can actually see it on the board, just to underline, it's not two point six million increase. It's two.
Two point six million total cost.
For ten years.
Yes, I apologize, I didn't make that clear. So.
That that number shocked me too, that.
Yes, the projection is for our total cost in any of these scenarios over the next ten years. Does that make, does that clarify that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. There's, and perfect time to you to say that, okay, so here are some links on the bottom. Which if you meet those links electronically, let me know and I can give them to you. Um, C T dot gov. O P M dot gov, which is the U S Department of Labor's.
Office of Policy Management.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then. Again. C T dot gov, another, another. They reference some different things in here that you might want to look at, we're starting. So, alright, this is what we have to take into consideration when we're making this decision, federal law states. The employee must be paid time and a half over forty hours, that's the federal law. There's no law preventing employer from determining when a time and a half can be awarded. For example, their regular schedules are thirty five hours, that five hours in between. They're not scheduled to work it, sometimes they're requested to work it, but in most cases, we do. Allow them the opportunity to use flex time, you're up there, which is, we'll we'll get to that later. But um, it's weird, it's weird, this gets a little sticky, so as far as.
That's probably also when you, so we have a scheduled ten hour day. In a lot of places, you get time and a half or anything over eight hours, but that's the scheduled day, and so we're not paying it. Prior to forty, those two hours.
And just so you know, the over eight hours in one day is not a requirement by law. That is an employer's choice.
Right.
So, and again, there's no requirement to pay overtime when it's not authorized. It needs to be authorized first, they can't just work it and then say. I need to, you know, unless um. There is one caveat to that, if there's, if it's an emergency situation and nothing can be done, and again, that's in the policy, so we're going to review in a few minutes. So. Federal law also states any exempt employee must be paid compensatory time earned as uh. Time in one half. So, if they're asked to come in on a day that they are not regularly scheduled to be here, you must pay them compensatory time. That's not, there's no debate on that, that is Connecticut's, state of Connecticut's Department of Labor's law. That is one of the things that you'll find in that information. Or if it's another situation where um. They're working an excessive amount of hours, or they're coming back after they've left. As long as they have that authorization. They they should be being paid, they should be getting, earning compensatory time for those hours worked. So, and I don't think we have been um. Fair on this in the past, so uh we're trying to do our best to make it right moving forward since Peter began his administration. Our policies that are in line with the specific guidance by the U S and Connecticut Departments of Labor, but. How the compensatory time is earned is extremely vague and. We might want to review it a little bit, I gave you some examples of scenarios, but maybe you may want to. By following their little sake, it's exactly this situation. Here's the other thing, is. There's no requirement for us to keep it one way or the other, I don't believe, I'm almost positive. The employer, you know, Connecticut is an at will employment state, even though we're a municipality, most of those at will. Regulations um do apply. You know, so, at will, they can be salary one year and they can be. Or they can be exempt one year and not exempt another year, as long as we are complying with the. Either over pay or the overtime or, you know, the increased wage and compensatory time. And that might come in handy because I redid this, I'm I'm so glad we had the chance to talk. Cause some some things were not quite right, um. I want to go back to one slide to um. Show you what I was speaking, but whoops, sorry, I only go that way. So. At the ten percent projected increase, everything is all. You know, square, no problems, every, all the increases are actual increases. With. The union contract increases as well, that was something that we decided to do. Um, I don't think it would be fair not to give them the increases, everybody else is getting the increase, and again, this is, this law is. Meant to bring them up to cost of living for their standards of their position and their jobs, so. But um. Yeah. Okay, so maybe I don't have the correct slide on here, but when I redid it initially. Twenty five, oh no, I'm sorry, I do, okay. So twenty seven, twenty eight. And twenty thirty, thirty one. It is, if they're, if they're following the increase, it would be a reduction in pay. And you can't really go backwards. I mean, it's not a huge reduction, but I don't think that. You know, we'd have to take all these things into consideration. We can revisit this in three years when it's actually, we have a number. But again, it's um, that's where. Um, if it's only this amount, it's not going to be enough to cover where they should be. In three years. If that's the, if if it's a five percent increase or a ten percent increase, the ten percent increase is all good. If it's ten percent.
Alright, so.
Again, we're guessing, it's so hard when you're trying to, you know, forecast a number you don't know.
What, my my question is, and I think you've already answered this, but I want to clarify my own like. If you can move from compensatory to non exempt, uh um. Exempt to non exempt and non exempt to exempt, and you couldn't do that every year, so once we make a decision. On this, we're not locked in for the next ten years. So, if if we decided we've made a mistake for whatever reason, we can.
I mean, you you don't have to, you don't have to wait three years either.
No, no.
You know, you can make that change.
I, what I, I think that, well, my personal opinion is I I. Pretty, I haven't discussed it with anybody, but is that uh. If we make a decision, it should be good for these three years, so that our employees have some kind of stability and.
I agree, I agree. Um, alright, so, and then talking about this, some of our policies that we have for our salaries. Please. Um, the compensatory time. It's vague in the fact that it's um. I have following criteria. Except, so, i- it has to be authorized in advance. So if we know, for example, someone is working uh summer hours. And then they also have to come back in the evenings for summer events. They are definitely working over forty hours, it doesn't, there's no choice in that matter. So, that's a case where they would say, okay, can you please, um, I can't flex this much time. Can, you know, get the permission, and that's basically what that boils down to. Except for if it's an emergency, like the, like for example, the senior center caught on fire the other. Months ago or something like that, and they had people working like overnight to try to help them get people in hotels and stuff like. That would be an example when it's an emergency, that's um, or by weather. So um. The amount of the extra time work must be significant in terms of total, and again, this is if we are not making any convergence. So you have to kind of um. Take that into consideration, um. This compensatory time used within one month. Um, that's actually illegal, they have a year to use their their compensatory time. And that is posted on one of the Department of Labor sites, I don't remember which one, I don't remember where I read it. But it is one year that they have to use their compensatory time, I believe it's the Connecticut one. So. Trying, um, I I I think the language in the policy um handbook needs to be updated.
Is that, is that something that that uh we do with the union, or is that something that we can do as as a board?
No, that's something you can do as a board, because this is just the your, this is just the town policy handbook.
Yeah.
So that's something we maybe not require union approval, especially since it's not the law, anyway. So um, flex time, which I was kind of just describing that earlier, um. Basically, if they know that they need to be here on X, Y, and Z. They should be allowed to flex, have a flexible schedule to kind of offset the. Overtime hours that they're going to be working.
So they have to be here at six, instead of leaving at four, they they know they're leaving at six, they can come in tomorrow, so.
Right, exactly.
That makes sense.
Or if they know that they have to come in on a Friday, they can take a different day off, whatever the case might be.
Well, I mean, and and that's only for exempt and not for non exempt, correct? Because that's, has to do with being a salaried physician.
Flex time is, is flex time is applicable to all positions.
Thank you.
But it's most um. Most necessary for our. Uh exempt employees, just so that they can have that flexibility, not be working. Fifty, sixty hours in one week and then not getting compensated for it, with the compensatory time. So, um, and then our hours of work, it does say, um, does clearly define what we consider um. In our work week. It varies, the department heads will advise the, of the work schedules. And of course, the needs of the position may require variation in their time, start and ending. As well as the total hours that they might be scheduled each day and week. So, yeah, there are times where they might work a little bit extra, but if it's, if it's not. Um. Significant in terms of total and duration, it is not. A requirement to provide. That um compensatory time, but in most cases, when they are requesting the compensatory time, it has been more legitimate. I have to work fifty hours this week, please, you know, whatever the case might be, or I have to run back and forth because I have to do one thing. And then I leave here at four, and then I come back at seven, or whatever the case might be. But that's something that they just need to get uh preapproval from their department head or supervisor. Cause they are their department head, so that would go directly to the selectmen. Um. And then the timekeeping. Apparently. I think I just kind of put this up there. Exempt employees using. Exempt employees using sick or vacation time, use their half day increments. They do for the most part, unless if it's a.
Right, most of this is, is, stays, it stays the same way it is whether they're exempt or non-exempt, and and whether we go, alright.
Correct. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that this page is full and that you.
Okay.
And most importantly, effective seven one twenty one just shows that this is from our.
Right. Our policy.
Policy, so, and here's the slide that everybody wants to see.
Right.
Alright, what are we gonna do? So we can convert the employees, and again, these are just projections. Over the next ten years for our total cost. We can convert the employees, and they may have a possible average of fifty two hours of overtime. And. It would be that plus that.
Yeah, right, correct.
Correct, sorry. No conversion, and if it's five percent. It would be, and plus the contractual increases, there's your total number.
Mm hmm.
No conversion, if it's ten percent, plus the annual increases, there's your number. And then. No conversion, apply mandated bumps only on those years. Which is one of the slides that was in there. It's a little um. I used a, a term that someone else used in other meetings disparate. And um, wouldn't necessarily be fair, but at the same time. This is not necessarily fair to the other employees that are not in this position. That are not going to be getting these increases, so that's. The other thing that you might want to know. Okay, so that's pretty much, in a nutshell, what you guys need to determine. And um, I do believe, if it's okay, the um. Employees that are going to be directly affected by this with like a minute to speak.
Alright, we, we have to make it a very quick minute because I have a hard hour in eight minutes.
Um, Janice, you start speaking, okay.
Janice.
Yep, here I am, um. I'll start by saying that, you know. We aren't guaranteed anything. When she's saying, it's not fair to the other people who are not getting a bump, we're not guaranteed a raise every year. It's only been because the person sitting in that seat allows us to go, you know, what the union's with. So to me, that's a. An odd statement. Secondly, Peter and I've had this discussion before, he knows a part I fought to get where I am. But if you look at, and I think Karen has copies, you look at comparisons, I did a salary schedule for collectors. For the. And so you're gonna see the disparity of what. Now I'm making, I think the lowest person. In a like town which has a thousand less residents is still making over sixty thousand dollars. So even with the bump, I'm not even gonna hit that mark. So I think it's a lot, I, 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 if you're pressed for time, I think it's something that um. Karen, Jimmy, Nicole, and I should talk about, and maybe come to another meeting, meet with you, however we want to do that, but I think we. Want to get our case across to all of you, to understand where we're coming from before you make a decision.
Thank you, yeah, I, I think we have quite a bit to digest here, so what I'm suggesting is that we table this for further discussion to another meeting. Allow us to catch up with what we have now, cause that's on to you, so you're right, I, I moved to table.
Yeah, so I make a motion to table this for the discussion, second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, old business, we need to appoint a town clerk, I want to say that um. Uh. Selectman Clark and I sat on the hiring board, this position was announced in. The newspaper, the website, uh indeed dot com, we had over seventy applicants. Of those seventy applicants, I believe we interviewed quite a few, yeah, it was like the ten.
I think we had eleven on the list and one found a job before we interviewed, so we interviewed ten.
We had a hundred and sixty eight applicants.
Hundred and sixty eight?
Hundred and sixty eight.
Wow. Anyways, we had a lot of applicants, we had a lot of good applicants, and uh. Selectman Clark and I agreed that. Given the totality of what was there, that we should offer the position to Nicole Schneider. And we have, she has started it, as the town clerk, because we. Didn't, we have a lot of things for the town clerk to do, and it was a lot of time between meetings, it would have been more if we hadn't met at eight thirty this morning. So I moved that we appoint. Uh. Nicole Schneider as town clerk, town of Wellington.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Uh, just briefly, uh, there was quite a bit of noise about this on Monday, that this was done somehow secretly or or sort of. Overtone sort of maliciously, I, I looked at the. The, our, you know, the town, um. Whatever our, our method of doing that, and. I couldn't see that it had to be done in a town meeting, I also wonder what role, just curious, what role would the residents and the voters play? In a hiring, do they have a role in that?
No.
So why does it have to be done, just because all things are supposed to be done in a public forum?
We tried to be as transparent as possible.
No, I know, I know, I know there was no malice intended, it was, and uh. Um, I, you know, so. Uh, I, I think it was a sound decision, I would have accused myself anyway, cause my son was an applicant, so that would have been, I wasn't part of that conversation. Cause it would have not, I didn't see any, I didn't look at any applications, I never reviewed them. Uh, once I learned that he was an applicant, I just recused myself from the entire conversation, so regardless, it would have been. Um, you and and Matt, the first selectman of that making the decision. I just don't quite understa, is it. Required that all things be done in a selectman meeting, because certain routine decisions are happening all day.
I.
And I just don't really know the answer, just for, for future reference, does any.
I, I don't know the answer either.
Okay, and out of respect to the people that were upset about it, I think you made the right decision and moved it, and that's fair.
I think there's two issues, one is the hiring decision. And the other one is the appointment.
I see.
So the hiring decision.
That is, that is totally within the.
Right, right, right. And then the appointment should be done in, okay, and then that seemed to be the general consensus, and I don't think it's wrong, but. Again, I don't, I know there was no malice, so.
Alright.
That's it.
So anyways, we have a motion and a second, we have no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Uh, under old business, we also have tax assessor appointment, that should be revenue collector appointment, because this is a special meeting and we can't change the agenda. We will pass on that and add it to our next agenda. Is there any good in welfare?
Uh, yes, I uh, I made a very judgment, and I spoke sort of out of turn with some uh. Residents, just in a casual conversation, and I uh, by. Just a lapse of good judgment, and it won't happen again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I apologize to you if that caused you any problems, cause I didn't see it got posted on, things I said got posted on social media, and I regretted that, so.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was interesting, and I gotta get upstairs.